Welcome to the January 27, 2014, regular selectmen's meeting. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item, approval of minutes, business meeting and executive session of January 13th, and workshop and executive session of January 22nd.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, going quick now. Citizens input, would there, anybody like to be heard? This is getting quick. Communications, anybody have anything?
I forgot to bring the flyer, Mr. Chairman. The Lester Spencer Eagles will be having a Valentine's Dance at Pine Ridge Country Club. On February 14th, it's Saturday. Cocktails start at 6:00, and dancing at 7:00. They'll be selling, you know, they'll be serving hors d'oeuvres there. So, it's $5 to get, so it's a cheap night, so if you'd like to get as many folks out there.
I can afford $5.
Are you going with Tony, Wendy, or can you go with me? Or you already have a prior commitment with him?
He can't dance.
Here we go.
Sounds to me like we're open office, gentlemen.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, new business.
Just in communications, we were just informed tonight from, you know, we have two guys that come to every meeting, Al Hsu and Kalkowski, and we were just informed that he had a stroke, so I guess all our thoughts and prayers are with him. Let us know, we can go visit him and harass him, and we'll bring him some ice cream and girly magazines, or whatever it is.
I got the ice cream.
Yeah, Bo will eat the ice cream on the way.
You can bring both.
And I thought it was Kyle, he's a great guy.
Mr. Carl.
Okay. Exchange Club, Veterans Memorial at Proudey Park, Gary, what do you say?
Mr. Harold.
Good evening, gentlemen. Gary Harold, representing Spencer Exchange Club. And I'm gonna read this today, just so I don't forget anything. But I think you all have a copy of the grant proposal that Adam gave you. But Spencer's Exchange Club is raising money for a Veterans Memorial to be built at Isaac Proudey Park, which is right next to the old high school. The club has been actively raising funds through the clubhouse on ice, by the way, which just went on the ice Sunday, the raffle. This is our third year, and we have about $20,000 so far. This Veterans Memorial will address the citizen soldiers from Spencer. In the past, efforts have made twice by the town to move forward with a memorial using public monies, and both times it was turned down. Presently, we have the memorial in Town Hall Rotunda, and the Veterans Memorial on South Spencer Road, which is under repair as we speak. There is no memorial for Desert Storm, Desert Shield, or Afghanistan conflicts, and any other conflicts we may encounter in the future. While Spencer has not lost anyone in these conflicts, many citizen soldiers have served from these conflicts. Both of the present memorials are not truly viewable or usable by the residents of Spencer or the visitors. Isaac Proudey Park on Main Street is such a place, and houses the Civil War monument, and 13 trees planted for World War I soldiers that gave their lives for Spencer. Isaac Proudey Park's trees are overgrown with roots that trip people when they try to walk into the park, and they present the monument, and the present monument is hidden and not very accessible, especially when the trees are in full bloom. The Goddard Kirk Post 138 uses the park for their annual Memorial Day ceremonies, and the present condition, design of the park, is difficult for those ceremonies to proceed and view. The Spencer Exchange Club wishes to totally renovate this park into a usable, viewable venue for our residents and visitors to sit, and relax, and reflect on a citizen soldier that has fought and gave their lives for our freedoms. Thus, Senator Brewer approached me, and stated he wanted to help the club accomplish this goal. He has assisted me in procuring, and the name of the grant is Promoting Community Development and Tourism in Central and Western Massachusetts. So I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board for approval and legal authority to construct, operate, and maintain this facility on the town of Spencer's land known as Isaac Park. I need documentation of legal authority to present for my grant. In terms of this authorization, I am hoping along with any monies I might receive, might not get any, if received from this grant, still there will be fundraising monies to finish the project, and any excess funds will be dedicated to the operation and maintenance of the project. This fundraising will take the form of laser-inscribed paving bricks and bronze plaques for families, businesses, and corporations. We presently do not have a design, and have not formally estimated the project as time is of the essence, because this grant is due February 17th. The estimate represents the knowledge and expertise of our club members. I have a rendering, and my proposal delineates our plan that you have, and your proposal there. I believe you have a copy of that, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have. And before I do that, this is the rendering that was proposed, probably the first debt explosion years ago. And it was close to $250,000 to $300,000, and it got turned down. There was a committee put forth for that, and it was actually, this was done by Dick Lamro, and it really didn't depict exactly what was going on then either. I don't think there was a really formal thing, there were supposed to be statues and everything, were very expensive to do.
Gary, can you hold up?
Yep.
Well, either starts where you had.
Okay. Good?
Great.
That's great. So the, what we did is, we took this, and also then, at the time, Peter Adams presented a monument for the citizen soldier in that park, and that got turned down. I believe that was $70,000. So when I joined the Exchange Club, and a bunch of other veterans in the Exchange Club, decided we would not use public monies and go further with this idea. And basically, this comes right off the sidewalk there. It'll be cut into the ground, we'll take all the trees down, except for a few of them right out by the sidewalk. And you've seen that in my proposal there. And then there will be stairways up to the existing Civil War monument, where we will do a half-circle type thing, too. The original half-circle thing down here, we'll have a center flagpole and benches, and we'd like to also do something for Seth Fancher, too, in that respect. He was concerned about this, and we want to memorialize him a little bit, too. And it won't be exactly like this, but if you see the corridor in Auburn on Route 12, that's amazing.
They did a nice job with that.
And I have pictures of all that, and it's probably gonna be more like that. We're gonna put granite around there, and we'll have some black marble also, in case anybody does give their life from Spencer, and we'll memorialize them on that. But it will be pretty much granite with sayings on it, bronze sayings and quotes that we will come up with. Again, there's no formal design yet, maybe we can get some money, and somebody will donate the design, such as, you know, Dick did, or his firm, anybody. But point being, we're not there yet. I didn't think we were gonna, it was gonna be, we have a five-year plan for this process with the Ice House, clubhouse on Ice, and when Senator Brewer hit me with this, I jumped through a hoop and came up with a proposal, and here we are. But it's gonna be something with this video. Actually, in my proposal, there's two phases, I'm only gonna apply for one. The last phase would be up at top there, with some kind of brick or concrete structure, so we could actually have the ceremonies, people sit up there, as you know, when we do the ceremonies for the Veterans Day, Memorial Day thing, so, any questions?
I wonder if I can do this on my phone. Do you have like sketches from the top? You know, with stuff?
No, we don't, no. I sent that to Adam on the...
I don't have that, I have just photos. I have...
I sent that, if I'm not, I can send it to you again.
If you could, they have tonight, they have the letter to Senator Brewer, and they have the proposal, the costs, and the breakdown, and everything like that, and then, but yeah, I don't remember seeing that.
But on the edges, there will be a flag for MIA, you know, POW MIA, and there'll also be a state flag. Certainly, as you see there, I want it to be very visible, I'm gonna put cameras out there, I want an irrigation system, there's gonna be LED lighting. I have talked to Sheldon Baikoff, he's the president of MHBI. I'm sure we can run off their building, their structure there, and we could put meters in, and as long as, you know, I think the Exchange Club is gonna do as much as they can to keep the, pay for the electricity and the water usage. Probably what I'd be looking for the town, it's probably the same thing you're doing now, is mowing lawn, and any leaf, you know, picking up.
Which is what we do anyways.
Right. So what I need from you tonight is that authority to do that, so I can apply for that for my grant. Any questions?
Of course you have.
Gary, since the folks watching, you know, don't have the detailed description here, just to be clear, you'll be removing the existing 13, but they will be replaced by 13 ornamental, so we won't lose that connection to the 13 World War I vets, right?
Right, just to make, those 13 trees are huge, maple trees, and they're way overgrown, and there's some other trees mixed right near them, too. So when the Memorial Day ceremonies take place, people get lost going which tree is which.
I think the root system is so bad now.
The 13 names. So we're gonna put up small ornamental trees that will stay small, probably in a line, and we'll delineate those names in some kind of grant, too.
Still gonna have 13 trees, just not though.
Right, right, right. But we're gonna, there's four of the trees I need to take down, too, to make way for some of these.
What's up by the edge there, the creepy ones in this woods over by the fence?
Yeah, but as long as those 13 people are originally, you know, if we think of them, like, say, even if it's a small bush or something.
No, we're gonna use ornamental trees, we're gonna do a rep.
Yeah, Gary, I was gonna mention the same thing, because everything's been overwhelmingly positive about this project. It was the trees that someone asked me about, and I'm like, I, you know, they were concerned about that, and I'm sure, being a member of the post, you've smoothed that out with...
I'm on the board of directors, and we've talked about it, and they, as soon as they go up there on Memorial Day, they realize what a hassle it is, you know, so. You know, Spencer's downtown has got some needs, but as we come down the street, I mean, Spencer's got some great old homes along there, and some great things to be proud of. And, you know, in the new high school, I mean, the old high school, which has turned into Proudey Living, is a nice thing, and originally, when I sold that building to them, when I was on the Select Board, that was part of the proposal, that we would try to work with them with helping that park. Well, it never came to fruition, you know. They were sort of trying to put some benches down there, so their residents could enjoy it, too. I wanna make it visible and usable for everybody walking down the street. Somebody might just wanna stop in and see it. A lot of, there's a lot of veterans out there that are very proud of being veterans, and they wanna go in there and look at it, too.
Did you try hitting them for money, Gary?
The American Legion is just barely holding themselves above water right now.
MHBI, did you go to them and say?
No, they're always looking for money, too. But, you know, I'm not saying, depending on what I get with this, and what kind of money I get, if they give me all the money, I could probably do it. According to the grant, you're supposed to finish everything before December 214, but there's always mitigating circumstances, so you don't really have to.
Usually they give you extensions.
Right. Point being is that, depending on what I get, we're gonna, now that this has really come out, I didn't expect this, we're gonna probably do some other types of fundraisers, and we can get everybody involved, and take some money, you know, so. I was talking to Gary back here, we, you know, there's the opportunities to raise money and fund, run fundraises and lists. And I must say about Spencer, I know a lot of people don't like to pay their taxes, and they're, you know, they think they're too high or too low, or whatever, but I will tell you this. I'm a professional fundraiser now, between this, the Exchange Club, and the American Legion, the people of Spencer are the most generous people I've seen in a long time, especially the businesses. They get hit up all the time, and they're still there, helping us. And my thanks goes, my thanks go out to those people, the residents and the businesses in town, wholeheartedly.
When do you guys, when are your meetings up there, the first Friday?
We're the first Friday of every month at the American Legion, yes.
Because I'm doing the bathroom thing for you guys?
Yes, you want to, I'm on that committee, too.
But I wonder if I can, I wonder if I can do that, or get it close. I just got an upgrade for my program, and I can do granite and all that, so I wonder if I can. I'll have to see. I mean, I could at least get it close for you, maybe if then Dick could, you know, or I don't know, maybe I can get it, I just, I don't know.
We did get some money from Senator Brewer, did give us $25,000, too, for this project.
No, I mean to design that.
Oh, yeah.
I think I can do that.
To shorten up the rendering?
Yeah, because now, with the new upgrade, I can take like a picture of that monument, and import it in, and make it look like a picture, now. I wonder if I can do...
We'll see what we can do. You know, there's some expensive, I mean, extensive site work that needs to be done, you know. If you look at my proposal, and, but, you know, it's still, everything's up in the air right now. First, I need some money.
Question's kind of to you, Gary, and to our administrator. What kind of flexibility do you lose on this project with the grant? And what kind of flexibility do they lose by us giving them the okay? Are they bound by certain rules in getting this work?
Well, there'll be a contract, just like any other state grant. You'll have a contract, and you'll have a certain scope of services, and you'll have certain, you know, the state is really big on...
The payroll wage and all that.
Yeah, and, yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Let's see what happens.
Certain threshold, yeah, let's get the money first.
Right. First, I need the letter to get there.
Well, and I think, you know...
Yeah, we need to vote, give them the legal authority, apply there, we'll get the money, and then...
Yeah, and I think that's where we have to go with this. I mean, anytime anybody takes the opportunity and the desire to tackle a project like this, my hat's off to you. Most people know, my brother's 100% disabled vet, so I'm with you, so whatever we gotta do.
So we need a vote of the board to authorize...
We need a motion, yes.
Yeah, a motion to submit the grant, giving them the legal authority to do so.
I have a motion to give you the authority to go forward with, and I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adam, you'll handle that one.
Yeah, so we're gonna work together in the language of the letter, and then I'll give a second turn, and we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Gary, great addition to Main Street.
You getting feedback on Sunday, you need more help on Sunday?
I do need some, I don't know.
I'm not watching anything on Sunday.
Well, how come when I ask you to help me on Sunday, you won't help me?
Hey, I come to work with you on Sunday, and I had to pick up the garbage, I don't get to handle nails or anything.
Tony, help me come split wood, yeah, I'm busy Sunday.
I buy the doughnuts and the coffee.
You are something, you're a good friend, no, you really are.
Alrighty, I'll remember that there.
Now that we got beyond that friendship. Discussion, letter of support for DCI recreational grant application for Depot Trail.
Mr. Chairman, I invited Ginny Scarlett tonight, and most of you know Ginny, who's our former conservation agent. Ginny's been working hard with a group of folks from town to renovate the existing rail trail. They're seeking to apply for a $50,000 grant to the Department of Conservation and Recreation's, recreational trails grant program. So similar to the last presentation, they are looking for a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen for the grant application. And I asked Ginny to come tonight, if there's any questions, but you do have a breakdown of what they're looking to do on the trail, taking care of erosion, and putting some drainage in, and working on, eliminating some of the drainage cuts that have happened along the trail, and doing some other work and modifications to the trail. So, again, the only thing that we would need from the Board of Selectmen is just a vote of letter of support. I would draft a letter, work with Ginny, and we'd write a, we'd get that to the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, and hopefully they're successful in obtaining that award.
Any questions from the board?
I think it would be useful to hear from Ginny, I know it'd be Ginny or Margaret who's gonna be here, but just from the standpoint of, for everybody listening, the significance of the Depot Trail for Spencer, and the kind of use it gets, and, you know, what it means for, you know, for the future recreation?
Well, it was completed in 2006.
Let me ask her to come up here.
Before I started working with Conservation Commission as a joint project.
You come up here, you can't quite hear you.
The Conservation Commission acquired the rail right away. I believe that was a free turnover. And, but it was all overgrown, and so there was a cooperative effort of Spencer Snowbirds, Conservation Commission, and other volunteers to get that cleared, and the trail graded. There was a small grant obtained at that time, to pay contractors to do the work that couldn't be done by hand. And the trail was built, and it was beautifully serviced, surfaced with stone dust-type surfacing, and opened in 2006. And then, from my own experience while working as the wetland soil specialist, can't we rename that Conservation Agent, guys? So, it's known what you're talking about. Anyway, I would occasionally go down there to check out either a complaint from somebody, and there weren't many of those. Or to check the condition of the trail after a big storm or something. There are spots where the original layout grading turned out not to be effective in terms of draining it well. And it goes down a slope from Chestnut Street down to South Spencer Road. Every time I was down there, I met multiple people using it. I think it gets a lot of use, or did, when it was passable. It's also used by a major root of the snowmobile clubs, part of it, not all of it. And it connects to Howe Park, and the trail's over there, and going westward from South Spencer Road. So it's integral to a regional trail system. It's heavily used by Spencer people. And interestingly, the amount of litter along it is not great, which means people are taking care of it. But it's washed out a number of places. The town did some work down at the lowest point where the Cranberry River comes through, and had been flooding over the trail. So we've invested a lot of effort, both volunteer and some town funds. And it's a real shame if we let it all go. So this opportunity for a grant to get it repaired, and more important, get the original drainage problem straightened out, so it won't wash out repeatedly. Please, support this.
So is this coming from the town, Adam, or through the Land Trust, or?
Not the Land Trust.
No, okay.
You also had a meeting at Conservation Commission last week. Who's gonna actually be, is it gonna be the town of Spencer on the application?
I don't know, at this point. There's a Spencer Trails Club that was formed of the volunteers and the groups that were doing the original Depot Trail, and they may have reactivated.
But it seems like there's enough support on the Conservation Commission, the trails group, the volunteers, that...
Yeah, the Commission is, has been trying to figure out how to get this tackled without hitting the town up for money.
And Parks and Recreation have been involved as well, so. So at, one option is that it would say the town of Spencer, you know, through the Parks and Recreation Commission or Conservation Commission, applying for the grant.
Yeah, it might well be Parks and Rec that's actually applying, because I believe the town voted that they should have oversight of the trail after it was finished.
They do, they do. So this board, which has separate authority, and they do, would just offer the letter of support from the Executive Committee of the Town of Spencer for that application.
Any other questions?
Well, I am 100% behind making sure that we protect our assets in town, this, that trail is an asset, and I applaud whoever is looking to get these grants on going that route, and finding any source of funds to get this accomplished. I did get a call from someone who was 100% behind the project. He was just concerned about when, and I guess it was loose talk amongst some folks on the committee, that when we get to the point, and we haven't even gotten the money yet, but when you do, that we get the appropriate, you know, procurement process, get the right labor, bonded labor, to protect all groups involved when we get to that point. But, you know, 100% behind this effort.
It's pretty, I mean, it's obviously, state law is state law, but obviously typical when you get a state contract, a state award, as we were talking about the previous application, you will have a specific scope of services, they'll have certain legal language in there, mentioning, you know, following proper procurement procedures, and that's associated with the grant money from the state, so.
Absolutely.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to offer a letter of support from this board for the grant, whatever you need.
Depot Trail repairs.
Whatever you wanna call it, whatever you need, it's a fun place.
Thank you.
We're gonna make sure Adam gets it right for you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Ginny.
Thank you.
Old business, discussion, Spencer Rescue Squad, this is on the moratorium of the memorandum of understanding. Gary, you're here, you wanna come up?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to pass out a revised memorandum of understanding in your packet. You have a draft. If you recall, the history here, back in September, October, the Rescue Squad approached this board, informing them of the fallout from the Paxton Board of Selectmen not supporting a renewal of the contract for services from the Rescue Squad in that community. As you know, there was language in the agreement between the town of Spencer, this board, and the Spencer Rescue Squad regarding the primary backup being that service that was being offered through the town of Paxton, through essentially a mutual aid agreement. So this past fall, Mr. Suter came before you, I think with Mr. Cluder at the time, and we discussed the opportunity for Mr. Suter and I to draft a memorandum of understanding, which would give them a certain period of time to try and work on a revision to that provision, which required the town of Paxton to be the primary backup. So we worked on a draft memorandum of understanding. We talked about going through to June 30th, would allow them to explore different options, other mutual aid options, or other changes in their operation that would fill that gap of the absence of the town of Paxton. As you saw from documentation that they provided us, and I provided to you, they were kind of blindsided by the fact that the town of Paxton, when all along, appeared to be looking forward towards another three-year agreement. That did not happen. So with that, I just handed out just a couple of small redline provisions that have been mailed since I mailed the document packet last Thursday. Mostly just grammar, capitalization, sections, towns, boards, and then one change to item seven. So with that, I invited Gary to come in here tonight, answer any questions you may have about what they're looking to do. Again, you have a contract in place, it's for three years. We're just more than halfway through the first year. They have been complying with the agreement, which provides and provide financial documentation and other documentation related to services and levels of service, and we've been reviewing that between the fire chiefs, the police chief, and myself, and then I've obviously been giving copies of those to you every month. So we're happy with that relationship so far. We've had an opportunity to meet and discuss different operations, coordination between the liaisons, between each entity, and so here we are. Seeing if we can buy some time for them over the next few months to try and work on some other way to provide a primary backup. We still have backup, and Gary can talk about how they've been providing backup since October. But he's here tonight to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Gary, if you wanna ask him?
Well, I expect some things, maybe you're quietly happening behind the scenes, or, you know, may not be able to share everything, but there's some viable alternatives to the Paxton coverage emerging?
Viable may be a more optimistic term. Back when we were talking prior to the contract, there was a lot of discussion about regionalization and getting together with the Brookfields. There's been, we hosted a meeting at our offices in November. We had representatives from North Brookfield EMS and East Brookfield come in, Central Mass Regional Planning. And we talked about going forward with some sort of regional effort, you know. My proposal was to have one organization encompass all three communities. So Spencer Rescue Squad would kind of become, for lack of a better term, tri-town community ambulance service or something. And that would provide us with the necessary primary backup that we lack without having Paxton. So we scheduled the second meeting in December. We had the Regional Medical Director ready to come in and discuss questions that were brought up at the first meeting. Unfortunately, the day before the meeting, both communities backed out. They couldn't make it. So it was a disappointing phone call to take, but, so we're trying to get another meeting scheduled, but we've been unsuccessful with that. So I would say regionalization efforts are gonna be difficult. I'm not saying that we're giving up on that, we're gonna continue to try, but I think it's on, it's not, it's not possible to think that we're gonna have any sort of regional arrangement by June 30th, you know, optimistically. That's, that would be really optimistic. We are looking at different ways of staffing a second ambulance during the day. It wouldn't be ALS. Sometimes it might be, but for the most part, the majority of the time, probably 60% to 70% of the time, it would be a BLS second truck. But we nonetheless would have a second truck staffed out of our station with some on-call EMTs who would get paid, we're working that out, like a per-call basis, or an on-call type of stipend. So at least we'd have a second truck that could respond somewhat quicker than mutual aid might be responding now. And if we needed ALS, we could get...
And if we needed ALS, we could get it in Leicester on the way into the hospital. So, we're looking at that. And we're gonna continue with regionalization, but I gotta tell you that it's gonna be a difficult road. We've seen information from National and State Fire Chiefs Association that promote to the fire chiefs that all fire departments should run their own EMS departments. So, the two departments we're trying to regionalize with are both fire-based for the most part. So, it's gonna be difficult to, you know, we're kind of at odds with they're getting one message from their people and we're trying to send another one. But we're still working on that. But I'm hoping in the meantime that you're happy with what's the service we've provided. We've actually had a better, we haven't had an open shift since we've been out of Paxton because now we have more paramedics than we need. So, we never have been without a paramedic since then. And I think we've been managing the mutual aid calls pretty well. I mean, we don't really have any control over how quick they get here. But, you know, I do report that to you guys every month. Short of that?
And I do look through that, and you're right, that's where the lapse is, but it seems to be working. I think that, you know, and Selectmen Bertham and myself went to those Paxton meetings and, you know, it didn't turn out in any way we thought it was gonna include them, the way you did. So, I think that given him till June 30th, to keep working on what he's doing, I don't think that's asking a lot.
Yeah, and I don't think...
I think June 30th, we'll be back here talking about it again, you know, where you're gonna be.
Yeah, I think ultimately, we might have to just amend this particular contract to reflect what's actually happening. Give us additional time to either, you know, hopefully by that time, we've got more to report on the regional effort, but I'm not so sure that that's gonna move very quickly.
Yeah, and I'm optimistic that that's where it's gonna go. But I just think that, you know, I mean, we committed to this point. I don't think that another five months is gonna hurt us. We do have the ambulance service, I had to bomb the other day heading down Maple Street. So, I mean, we don't have another solution here tonight, so I don't think that kicking this around is gonna make a change.
Mr. Chairman, I've appreciated that, you know, the information we get monthly. But what I lack is some perspective on, say, those calls that, the response time falls outside of the, you know, outside of the goal. How does that compare with our his, our past history, especially when Paxton was involved? Are we finding that we're having a lot more that fall outside that range? Or is it, what I lack is a perspective on that, how much, is it a lot worse?
I can't answer that question tonight, because we didn't actually track that prior to this. You know, my gut feeling tells me that there were always some calls where responses were somewhat extended, just because maybe both trucks were out or were responding from Webster Square or something like that. But I can't tell you that there's any more now than there was then. But I could get that, you know, I could have that for you if you'd like.
I would find that useful.
Maybe in the next report?
Yeah, just that comparison was helpful, because in the end, it's to be, to really be simple about it, especially with the finances we're dealing with and the challenges. And what are we, you know, what are we getting for the hundred and fifty thousand, you know, now compared with before? When, you know, I know the terms change on all of us.
And in some of those calls, and I think I noted in there, just getting to certain parts of Spencer are more than the ten minutes under the service on plan. You know, if it's on Wilson Ave and it's in the wintertime, it's just that, you know, we don't, we don't advocate driving crazy to get to a call. I mean, we cautious, we go cautiously and we proceed, you know, with caution. There's no reason to drive crazy. So, there are certain parts of town that it's just gonna take. If you Google map it and you do from our point to their point, driving regular, it's a twelve-minute drive. So, some of that, I'm sure we've had that all along. So, but I could, I can get you more detailed information on that.
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Chairman, for the folks at home. The main thing that we're talking about here is secondary calls. We have a service in the community, they provide twenty-four-seven ALS service. And the primary issue right now that we're talking about is the secondary calls. So, when that primary call that's being served by paramedics is out on another call, and a second call comes in, who's covering those calls? And that's the main issue. And in the contract that we originally had, when Spencer Rescue Squad had an arrangement with Paxton, that would be the primary backup, primary mutual aid. Most communities around us have mutual aid agreements. Town of Lester's been covering here, East Brookfield as well, and it's the same in a lot of other communities. So, that's the issue, it's the secondary calls. You still have a primary served call, that first call, we have something available.
I agree with you, and that is the part we're discussing. I think, not to speak for John, but...
No, you're right, thank you for that perspective.
From his perspective is that, you know, is that, you know, we used to have an ambulance sitting at the Mary House, which is virtually in town, so the lapse of time, and let's face it, guys, if somebody was dying and it happened to be your family member, you'd question it. So, I think that's where he's coming from, not to speak for it.
That's right, yeah, thank you for that.
So, the only thing different is the back, that is it. Everything else is gonna be the same? So, what other towns, are there any other towns that have a deal like we have with Paxton? Where, so, say Leicester, their ambulance is gone, you guys move closer and you do...
No, nobody, nobody moves their equipment around to be in a better position to cover that town. We did with them because we were kind of like one organization. So, we'd go there, we'd go, we'd send the Spencer truck up there, you know, they were out and vice versa. But for the most part, there isn't anybody around us that has that, except for a straight mutual aid agreement.
So, what does East Brookfield do? Say, I mean, East Brookfield isn't, they have ALS during the day, not at night, but during the day. So, what happens at night if they need ALS? They call you, or whoever?
Right, they'll call us, they'll call Brookfield, they'll call, they'll probably us.
Whoever's close.
So, what about...
Like Leicester's a good example, they have, Leicester has an ALS. When that primary vehicle is out...
Then they call somebody else.
And then backup, and then the second call comes in, do they have a second vehicle in the station? Maybe certain times of the day, or they have fire service.
Do they have a second ALS vehicle?
Correct, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, as do we, we have two ambulances, but we staff one. And I think Leicester's the same way, except they have, they have more paramedics that live in town that are willing to call on a second call. So, I think they have a better ability to get a second truck out if they need it.
But that's how they do it.
That's how they do it.
So, every other ambulance around does it like you do it now. We were the only ones that had a deal like Paxton.
Right, we were unique with that agreement.
So, I don't get what the deal is here, what's, what do we, what's the debate here?
Well, the concern is that the contract, when we signed a contract back before July 1st, it had specific language in it that referenced the primary backup being the ALS truck from Paxton. Once the arrangement from Paxton fell apart, there became a difficulty with our, complying with our contract because that, they couldn't comply with that particular clause.
No, no, I get that, but that, I mean, that's not our fault. I mean, and Paxton's gonna suffer for that, obviously, because they have some serious problems out there with calls now that is staying pretty private, and they went to a BLS. So, that, I mean, that's gonna implode. And as far as the regionalization, in a few years, you're not gonna have a choice, just because of the cost.
So, the concern is that how do we address the Spencer contract? The way we thought in the last fall, the way we would address it was not to change the contract immediately and just get rid of that provision and insert a new provision. The discussion back then was, let's, you know, there's some things going on, some discussions about regionalization, they're exploring their operations, they have available paramedics that were servicing Paxton, now they're available. What could be done, you know, over some time through their efforts?
I get all that, pal, I just, I don't get what the thing to June was. I thought we were gonna say, okay.
Well, that's the thing, that's the thing. And it's either, you know, well, the idea was that by doing this, by signing it again until June, is that when we go to change the contract, we're changing it based on, you know, the results of whatever effort they come up with.
Yep.
It's either that, or you can change the contract, you're gonna make a motion to change the contract now, you can do that. I mean, that's up to you, but, you know, this is the way we discuss it.
I mean, it just kind of doesn't make sense, because we actually benefited from having Paxton financially. Can you, can you do this contract, I mean, with using the local towns as ALS backup, like all the other towns do, for the hundred and fifty grand, for the next three years? You can do that. Because you can't come back next year and say, oh, we need another twenty-five, because we're gonna...
Yeah, no, no, we understand, we understand.
Do you want a copy of the contract with the clause?
No, I get the, I get the clause, I just, I don't, I don't get what the deal is. So, they're actually kind of taking a hit, and they're still gonna do the same thing. It's just instead of having Paxton as the backup, we're relying on the surrounding town.
Correct. At the end of the day, we're gonna need to change this clause, because this clause isn't happening right now.
Right.
So, we can either change it now...
No, I get that, so why don't we just change it? What's the, the June 30th? To see if you can get more money or another deal like Paxton, or...
Well, in case something changes, that was the whole thing, what he's working on, what he's working on.
This MOU, what it does is, it allows them to comply with the contract under like a temporary stay.
Yeah, I thought we were just gonna get rid of Paxton, then you put Leicester or the other towns backup in there, and that was it.
No, well, no, because there were...
It's always been that way.
The backups, there's no contract with Leicester, because they run out of funds.
No, no, I know, but... The reason we didn't go right to that point was because there was an opportunity to discuss other regionalization options that we wouldn't have to put that in there, like the other nonprofits that are in the area.
Oh, so they just switched the name, town name, basically, and stuff?
We don't know.
No, I got you, I got you.
A little more formal than that, but yeah.
It's just what we're doing, the contract was written, we had ALS automatically to come in on a second call.
Yep.
Now, we don't. We have to call for mutual aid from the other towns. And hopefully, they have ALS on it.
Yep.
Now, during the day, East Brookfield, they've got somebody that's on eight, that's three, I can imagine. Leicester's got somebody on it during the day, and I don't know if they have it at night, Gary, Leicester.
They do have one crew at night, but they're in Rochdale.
Yeah, less firm?
Yeah, so, what he's saying is...
It's kind of like the Paxton deal.
Yeah, it's gonna take, well, get from Rochdale to out here, it's gonna take you fifteen or more minutes to get here, or closer to twenty, depending on where, like he says, if it's in the winter, you're driving from Rochdale, you're gonna go to Thompson Pond.
Yep.
That's a good twenty, twenty-five minute ride.
But if there was a call on Styles and we got the backup at Leicester, it would beat our ambulance.
And our dispatch protocols for mutual aid are based on where the call is in town.
So, it's just demographic, but I just, I don't get the premise where they're making less money, and they're gonna do the same thing, just Paxton went on their own way, which is, we all know, that's gonna be an issue coming up real soon, because they can't do what they're doing, so.
But they're also not supplying a paramedic to Paxton, so that should bring their costs down, because they don't have a paramedic in Spencer in what it, in what it Paxton, during the day.
Paxton's, all Paxton's calls and money paid those people, you know what I mean?
But some of that still came out of Paxton.
Yeah, I know.
They didn't pay for the whole paramedic.
So, we, we got a little bit, we got a little bit of money from there. Now, we don't get that money, but they can still do the same thing. It's just Paxton isn't gonna back up Leicester or this one.
For the sake of argument...
You know what I mean, that's why I don't, why are we just not saying it?
Just back, just backing up, what happened was, I mean, I don't wanna rehash old stuff, but I mean, what happened was, it was kind of like, okay, now what?
I apologize, I thought we were just gonna take the Paxton deal out, and it was gonna go to the end.
Basically, at the end of the fall, before the holidays, we were actually dealing with school stuff at the time, but...
Oh, that's why, I was all discombobulated.
Yeah, we were.
I did forget where I was a few times.
But it was basically, okay, it had happened, we didn't know how to address it. There was some discussions going on, opportunities, let's give them some time to figure out what to do. And then, when we go to change this clause, it'll say what is actually gonna happen. You know, we could've done that then, but then, what we thought we'd do, or you thought the board would do, was, you know, give them an opportunity to explore all possibilities, give them the time to do that. The MOU all it does is give them a temporary stay from complying with that particular clause in the contract, still do what they're doing. And then, when we come back, at the end of the day, how are we gonna, you know, what's the language gonna look like here, based on all the things and efforts that they've undertaken? You certainly have the option of changing it now, and, but I don't have anything drafted, but, or you could allow them time to go further and explore what's out there.
I will agree to allow them the time to explore it, and what you guys think.
I'm in favor of a temporary language change to get us to the end of the first year. The year feels right to the point which to redraft something.
Yeah, and I would say, just for your own benefit, I would begin to think about, when we come back in June, there may not be anything different to talk about than there is tonight.
That's what Don is concerned with.
Which could be a possibility, but I think at this point...
But we're covered in the meantime.
What is this, when you kick the can down the road, is that what, or what is it, the other one? Due diligence, that one?
Mr. Chairman, from my perspective, it's all about agreed-upon level of service. If we're not gonna greatly affect the primary service that we're getting from Spencer Rescue with that article rewritten, and they can do it, they know what our financial situation is here. There's not another penny that could be wrung out of this.
That has to be emphasized, because once again, you cannot come back next year and ask for a dollar, because...
We understand.
I hope so.
And, and we have, and we have folks looking at the numbers and the statistics coming out of... You know, I don't, I don't have an issue with rewriting, you know, a clause in a contract. As long as we, you know, we are, we are staying on top of this, and you folks know, you know, we have a requirement for the level of service, that that's maintained. If not, then we, then we go to the next step.
Well, that was the whole point, because this clause is part of the level of service clause is. By not meaning this, they weren't meaning the level of service because of this clause. Because they couldn't mean it because Paxton wasn't involved anymore. That was the whole reason for this process.
So, I mean, I don't have an issue with going to June 30th, and we give him time and give us time to do what we have to and move forward.
And just as a perspective, as Mr. Stevens said before, so, we went back, we had a board meeting last Thursday, and I looked at, as Adam said, the, it's really about the second calls that we can't staff because we're at the hospital. So, October, November, December, there were thirty-three second calls that...
While your ambulance was...
While our ambulance was out.
You had ALS on, yeah.
And so, and it's not all of those were ALS, some of those were BLS, but, you know, nonetheless, it's about eleven calls per month, that's what we're talking about. We probably do eighty or ninety transports ourselves, and then you're talking about an additional, you know, ten percent or so of calls that we're really focusing on here, so.
Let me, let me ask you a question. So, say, when we had Paxton, and you guys were at the hospital, so there was a second ALS call. What if it was at Tony's house and on Styles? Would you call the lesser ambulance that was ten minutes away, or would you call Paxton that was an half hour away?
We'd have Paxton do it.
See, that makes no sense to me.
Well, we did it because...
Because you had the deal, you had the agreement.
And then we would retain the revenue from it.
Right.
Whereas if we give it to Leicester, we don't get the revenue.
Right, gotcha.
But I mean, you're right, there were some instances where the response time from Leicester may have been several minutes quicker, but you don't know if they had ALS at the time. We knew we had it.
Yeah, gotcha.
We could dispatch it immediately, or, you know...
And the other part of that call is too, is when you get a call down, say, down to Styles like that, they will tell you, and you know if it's a code one, code two, or code three.
Right, what type of ambulance it is.
Okay, what it needs. If it's a code one, it, I'm sure Gary would...
I'm guessing that's the worst one?
Yeah, that's the worst one, okay? If it's a code one, and Lester's there, he's gonna probably call Lester, he's probably sent Paxton at the same time.
Send them both, right.
Right, exactly, you know, so if Lester gets there, it's code one.
Yep.
You know, it's either you're gonna, Larry, you're not gonna die.
Yep.
Okay, so then he'd call the two of them. But, you know, if it's just a normal call, with Paxton coming down, so it took the next couple minutes, if it wasn't life-threatening, that's a different decision, too. You gotta look at each situation differently.
But if we have a second ambulance, it's BLS, and it's non-life-threatening, then it doesn't matter, right?
Well, yeah, they can do the call, then...
Because that's all Paxton has right now anyway, right?
Yeah, we don't...
They went to BLS?
But we don't call Paxton as backup.
No, no, I know, I know, I know, I understand the dynamic there.
We did offer, we did offer mutual aid agreement, but we haven't heard back.
So, let me ask you this now, I mean, unrelated to our service. What happens if they need an ALS ambulance now, what do they do?
Who, Paxton? Call Holden, I think their primary backup is Holden.
Holden, I believe.
So, they get whatever Bo says was a code one?
And I think they have a contract with MedStar.
Yeah, that's what it is, right.
If MedStar has a truck available close to Paxton, they'll send it, if not, they'll go to Holden.
Gotcha.
One twenty-two, you have it.
MedStar was their backup at that point.
Gotcha.
Okay. Pleasure.
It depends if you wanna live, Tony, that's what I'm asking.
No, I know, I just, I mean, it just kind of doesn't make sense to me.
I'm worried about Tony here, his ambulance...
We just fall into a hole there.
There was no hint that it's gonna be at your house.
I walked to the hospital.
I think he was trying to say to Tony that if it was you, he'd make sure the ambulance come for Paxton, I think is what he was saying.
Listen, you call me, I'll go to Tony's house, I'll take care of him.
You are a friend. He'll tell you, busy that day.
Yeah, right, he won't pick up trash or whatever it was. Pleasure with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, we make the, with the, the change in the language that's been, that's been proposed by the, by the newer vision, Adam distributed, to get us to June 30th, we could reconsider some final, you know, formal change in the original contract.
Just one question, Harry, so if, say, next month, you guys have a solution to this issue, we don't have to wait?
Correct.
No, absolutely not.
All right.
If he comes up with some miracle, then we can come back to it.
I have a motion in a second.
Well, no, he can get our own ambulance, you know, where it's a secondary round, that'd be great.
We're gonna try this, we're gonna try a three-month trial of staffing a second truck, and like I said, some of it may be ALS.
And see where it falls out.
And we'll come back with that, if it works, then we'll amend the language to read that... And, and we'll come back with that, if it works, then, uh, we'll amend the language to read that.
That you'll handle in the house, right?
Right, if not.
Exactly.
Alright, so I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Okay.
Gary, I have one more question, unrelated to this, as far as, uh, uh, certified paramedics, are there more from our town that have, has anyone shown any interest in working for your organization, helping out or help staff, or?
No, no.
You mean local people, Tom?
Yeah, local people.
I, I mean, paramedics aren't our issue right now, it's actually basic EMTs.
Well, I think you had to back up anyways, at that point, because of the people from Paxton, right, so you weren't in that situation.
So we're actually, uh, I think we're gonna direct solicit to EMTs who live in Spencer, of which, uh, there's probably twelve or fourteen. And some of those already work for us. So there's not a whole, uh, host of, uh, EMTs that live in town, that could be able to do this on-call stuff, but we're gonna reach out to them and see what we can do. We also have an arrangement with Anna Maria College, where some of their students are looking to do, uh, um, nine-one-one ambulance calls, and they'll come down and they can use our facility to study. And if a second call comes in, they'll go and do it, and then come back and go back and study. We have a few of those things in the fire.
It's not a bad idea.
We'll take, it'll take a couple months to try it out.
Yeah, you're, you're kind of about the, the, the fire organizations in these other towns wanting to take ownership. I mean, these are all volunteer departments, are you dealing with any, uh, did you talk to any full-time?
You mean the information staff?
Yeah.
It's just, what we have is, um, um, literature that's put out by the, either the Mass Fire Chiefs or the, or a National Fire Organization, encouraging local fire chiefs to either keep their EMS in the department, or if you don't have it, bring it in. So, you know, there's two diverse messages being sent, you know, we're, we're trying to say, hey, I think private can do it cheaper, but for whatever reasons they wanna, and they give, you know, those talking points on how to promote it, so. It's just gonna make it difficult to deal with Eastbrook Field and Northbrook Field, because most of those folks, Eastbrook Field is fire-based, Northbrook Field is private, but everybody, most of the people on the board of directors are firefighters from the town, so, just makes it tough. And, and I just wanted to make one comment on the Lester Spencer Eagles, we received a grant from them, um, back in the fall to get a thousand dollars worth of CPR training equipment, so, it's a great organization, people should go and support the dance.
Yeah, I have a leg, fund, I have an extra membership drive, so, get more firemen on there.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, discussion, questions for the legislative delegation, February twenty-four, twenty-fourteen? I will. There's questions.
You want questions? Alright, how about, like, the, uh, the agricultural school student transportation thing we have to pay for, that's the big one. Actually, I was just talking to one of the selectmen in Ocam, and they think they might have a student this year, and they were woefully unaware of the situation until they, they kinda got informed that you have to pay, or you get it taken off your cherry sheet, so they were asking me about that.
We're very familiar with that, yep.
Yeah, I, uh, and Goby was, uh, the, the lead on that, so I'll ask her where it stands in terms of committee, um, I can do that. And then obviously we'll, uh, ask Senator Brewer to provide us a financial update from the state, as you know. Um, there's been some discussion last week or so about the state budget, see what kind of impacts that will have on us, so.
Is local aid back up to where it was in a week? We're not even back up where we were.
No, and he's talking about level funding where.
For us, it was about two point eight million.
Was it two point eight?
And they proposed a level fund two point two this year.
Right.
Yeah, how about, let's get local aid at least back to where it was in a week?
And that was my question, is, why are we only level funding again?
Yeah, that's the governor.
Actually, less than level funding.
But Steve is a, uh, chair.
Yeah, he still weighs a mean, but that's, that's the governor's budget.
Correct.
And I'd like to know where they're coming from on the other side, you know.
It's an election year, so we'll probably get more than level funding.
Well, I think the same happened last year, um.
And I think the increase with chapter seventy money and ninety money, they might give you more.
Did they increase seven, chapter seventy yet?
Uh.
No, it's, it's in there, they might.
Correct.
So there's no number?
Might is a big word.
There's no number?
They have preliminary numbers, the governor issued a preliminary budget, and there are preliminary state aid numbers, and there are preliminary chapter seventy numbers.
The governor's numbers.
Correct, and, um, so the governor proposed a four point nine percent increase in spending, however, chap, uh, however, local aid was level funded. Um, our general government aid was level funded, however, we saw a decrease in our state pilots. Pilots is payment in lieu of taxes for the state-owned land, such as Hal Park, so instead of them paying taxes, they, they make a pilot to us. Uh, we lost money in terms of that proposal, um, and we also last, lost some money under exemptions, a small amount. So at the end of the day, our net is about seven thousand dollars less than it was last year.
Total, totally.
So it went from two point two four one, so two million two hundred forty-one thousand to two million two hundred forty-four thousand, uh, thirty, thirty-four thousand, I'm sorry, about seven thousand dollar drop. But again, that's the governor's original budget, um, the House will have an opportunity, the Senate will have an opportunity, and have a focus back on the governor, um, prior to July first, so. Um, I think the same thing happened last year, um, that, um, things will change between now and July. But, as I've always done, I've always budgeted the conservative number, um, and that's what you'll see in two weeks, you'll see the level fund.
I have a, a couple, my, my, my questions to them, you know, take the form of, of specific areas where I'd like to know where our legislators stand and, and what's being done, but I also have a, a, a general comment about the way that, that the, the state puts a budget together. And, but as far as the specific areas where, golly, it sure appears to us into, a lot of voters in Massachusetts, it's something like EBT cards. Uh, um, uh, is an, an area where we see, you know, reports of, of, of a lot of, of abuse and, and, you know, misuse of funds. And I remember Senator Brewer sitting here last year and saying, there's, there's no line in the state budget that says, you know, waste and fraud, and to that extent, he's, he's correct, but I, it, I, I can't figure out why the state is, is not tackling some of these, these areas, which would seem to be ripe with, rife with abuse, and, and where, where in the absence of things like, you know, photo IDs and such, we, we, what do you expect but a lot of, a lot of, a lot of abuse? Uh, it just, it just kills me, and this gets me to my second point I get, is, is that when it comes to, when it, when it comes to putting a budget together, I really wish they would take the cue from the towns. I mean, look at what we were doing this year, the kind of review of services you're doing, I don't see that being done at the state level, you know, getting the best value for the dollars. That's what just feels like, you know, the only level of government that's held accountable is a local, is, are the, is local government. I mean, you know, that's because we got, you know, we got people like Alan Carroll here, we've got viewers, and, you know, people can read their taxes and see what they're getting for it, but with the state, you, you, your income taxes, you know, go, and your sales taxes go, and you can't follow any of it. And, you know, here, we're, we're left at a, a point, you know, staring at, you know, level or, or levels, local aid, or, or, or less than, than, than the previous year. And I just, I just don't get it, you know, if, 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 if they see something, a new priority, what they do is they, they come up with new taxes, I mean, really, taxing our soda and candy? I mean, that's, that's just ridiculous. Um, I, I mean, they, they, they sell it under the guise of trying to make us live a more healthy lifestyle. That's, you know, they're just, they, they tax it because they can, because it's there and it's untaxed at this point. And, but, you know, but they're not looking to see where they can save money, or, or reprioritize, a- again, I, it's, they should, they want a clue how to do it, they should look at what you're doing with municipal services and the kind of tough questions we're facing this year, it just drives me crazy, I know, and, and, um, there are some areas that just appear, you know, to, to the regular voters, that, that there's a lot of money being wasted. And it's, it's just tough to take when, you know, we're struggling to, you know, find a few thousand here and a few thousand there. So I, I do have specific, you know, specific topics, like, like the EBT cards and areas where, you know, grabs a lot of headlines, and I know it makes good, it, it makes good stories, but it, but you shake your head and you say, what, you know, what are they thinking at the state level? And then in, in general, just how, how do they really go about, um, you know, looking at overall spending and, and coming up with, you know, a five percent increase? I mean, you know, we, 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 we have to live with two and a half percent, and with, with, in our experience, a lot of them, we can't control, or up more than two and a half percent, and they're, and they're deciding to invest in new areas. And, uh, I, I just think the priorities are all wrong, and the process is, is just not accountable, and just not understandable to the regular voters.
You wanna, um, do you wanna email me some specifics, John, in terms of?
Yeah, I, I have a question on retirement.
In terms of que, in terms of question, I mean, I think Steve, Steve generalizes, and you can ask, you can ask some follow-up questions when Steve goes through the budget, and he explains, you know, how, you know, what the revenue picture's like, and how much they've put away, and, you know, rainy day funds and all that kinda stuff, and you have an opportunity to follow up and ask, like, as you know, you've gone through the process before, but why don't you, if there's anything in advance, you wanna, you know, why don't you email me?
I will.
In the form of a question, Alex.
And I, and I think that's what we'll do, i- is, if you got anything, maybe, you know, I mean, John soapbox is away, but, you know, some of his points are very good, I mean, you know what, talk about taxing soda, but you know what, they tax my toilet paper stuff I really need to use, so. I mean, I guess if you wanna put stuff in perspective, John, think about it, so, Tony, go ahead.
Ms. Chairman, I was gonna mention something that I've mentioned, uh, for four years, and, and, you know, do I get an answer to the question? I don't know, uh, we have billions of dollars in unfunded liabilities in this state. And what's to say that we're not a bad cycle of revenues away from going the way of Detroit, or, you know, Californian towns that are, that are going to receive a ship or bankruptcy? I wanted, I'd like to know specifically, what, 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 what's the state, what's the state safeguards to, to, to manage that? Uh, we're getting kudos on, on audit reviews for putting a liability on a, on a budget line, well, that's where it doesn't cut it, it's, they gotta be paid for. Second area that's very frustrating for me is that the, the infrastructure in this town is crumbling, no one can tell me any different, and chapter ninety's not gonna, not gonna pay for it. I'd like to hear specific ideas from our, uh, delegation as to, what, 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 what can we do? I mean, other than do all this on the backs, backs of the taxpayers, it's, it's very frustrating. We can't be the only town where, where our roads are in hideous condition. And we talk about revitalization, but your roads are, your roads all around, we're doing this in bits and pieces, and I, and I appreciate every, every grant we get, but, I mean, all around that is crumbling. You're hearing that over and over again from our, from our citizens, that, you know, when are we gonna do this? Well, it's gotta get, get in line here, because we gotta tax you after this, after we tax you for this thing. So, um, uh, those are two areas that, that, that I'm, I'm concerned about, and, you know, as far as the unfilled liabilities, I've always had an issue with. And I, I think the state should really start addressing it in real aggressive ways, or we're gonna have problems down the road. But I'll also email you some other, um, pointed questions.
To, to Tony's point, and, and both those issues, I understand there is, there's some new money going into retirement funding, in, in order to anticipate some of these liabilities, but and I would ask, and, and this, I'll send this to you, Adam, but I mean, on that subject, you know, when is the state gonna move to something that's, that's done in the private sector? With, you know, with, with IRAs and, and, you know, matching funds and all, why do we have to, you know, why do we have to burden ourselves with, with the kind of retirement funding we've, you know, we've, we've done in the past? I, I mean, it's, it's not enough to just put more money in, into it, uh, into, into the current retirement funding, I think you have to look at it from the standpoint of where the private sector does it, so, uh, and as far as highways are concerned, I, I pulled up a, it's a rather massive report on US highway systems, and it was, it's sad to see Massachusetts forty-fourth in, you know, in effectiveness, and, and it's, and highways and roads, and, you know, it's, and the New England states seem to do, do quite poorly altogether. But, but even compare with, with New Hampshire, looking at things like administrative costs for our highways are, are way above those of, of, of other states. And you, you, you think at least if we're, and maybe we don't have as much money to put toward it, but at least you could be more efficient and, and put more actually into the project, and not into the, into the, you know, in, into all the regional offices and, and the administrative support. So I just think we should be getting a lot more for all of our money. So, but I will, I will follow up.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well said.
Well said.
Great.
Don't stop that here.
Handle it.
Final roll.
Uh, uh, town administrator, I was only gonna provide an update on the budget, and kinda did that in terms of what the state information was. Uh, looking at our calendar, we, we have a capital committee, uh, initial meeting tomorrow night, and then the finance committee will meet next week on Tuesday, February four. And they'll be back the following Monday with a preliminary budget for, uh, this board to look at, um, and I can tell you, after looking at it today, the, the numbers are not looking good. Um, you know, expect anywhere up to a million dollar deficit this year, um, based on, uh, they have, we have some numbers that have come in, such as preliminary numbers, uh, in terms of like minimum local contribution increases for Spencer Eastbrook Field and Bay Path, um, retirement, uh, liabilities. And then just obviously knowing that, you know, right off the bat, there's a four hundred thousand dollar deficit in the free cash that we put in last year, and, and several other things, uh, putting things back into the budget, such as putting Maple Street back in there, um, and some others, so, I've begun working the process of collective bargaining. Uh, we've, we've talked about those, uh, those issues in executive session, so you're aware of those, but, um, the number's gonna be in the high, high hundreds of thousands, if not up to a million dollar deficit. And that's when, the number that you'll be looking at as we look forward towards a municipal services review, uh, in terms of what things we move forward with, what things we choose not to, and what things, if any, uh, you seek and override for, so. Not a lot of positives at this point, um, you know, I certainly, uh, wanna thank the staff for their efforts, they, they've completed their process in terms of providing me the, their services analysis, and their budgets, and their capital plans. And now we'll begin, uh, working with our relative boards on those, uh, items and numbers, so, much more to come, and that's the state of the town tonight.
Okay. Board liaison report, anybody have any?
Just a reminder, I don't think this will be aired in time, but, uh, we have the Sudden Block, uh, public hearing tomorrow at seven PM in this, in this room.
In the air, huh?
In here. So, please come out and give us your input, and the capital committee will be meeting before, uh, Tues- tomorrow as well, to go over the initial, uh, uh, capital requests, uh, that we have in front of us.
Good, and that article in the paper that Carol did, I think brought a little light to the whole thing too, so.
She's been working very hard on the committee, great work.
Okay, citizens' input, anybody wanna be heard now?
You got nothing tonight? You get home, you never stop talking, but we're here at a meeting on TV. I'm gonna get slapped for that.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe.
I wouldn't see it.
Okay, I will entertain.
Um, just, I, just a final comment, I just underboard member comments, I was just gonna say, just a reminder to everybody that we, uh, since we will not be meeting before our, our tour of the, of the Abbey Brewery, but we will, we're all, we're, we're set up for a tour on Wednesday afternoon, February fifth.
That's next Wednesday, right?
Yeah. A week from tomorrow, um, a week from this coming Wednesday, yes, and we'll, we'll meet at two fifteen at the, at the gift shop, we're all set with your dad and, and, you know, and, um.
Very excited.
Oh, very good, very good, and, uh, Adam has extended invitation to department.
So, did you say you had a wheel, who said they had a wheel?
I got a service here, yeah.
No, we're.
Your father around, picture your dad around.
Yeah, yeah. He saw him, he wouldn't be able to walk that far.
Should be looking forward to having us.
They're already selling the beer, huh?
Yeah, they are.
You were telling me, right?
I had it last weekend.
Is it good?
Very good, very good.
They got a waiting list on the package store.
Oh, yeah, people signing up, yeah.
Somebody told me that today, that they looked in, and it, it's a, yeah, there's a waiting line. And what is it, four packs for like sixteen bucks?
Well, my wife went out, went out the outskirts, she got in here's an Auburn, and paid eighteen bucks for.
Seventeen forty-nine.
Is it, is it really good though, yeah?
Yeah, it's, it's real good, it's not, it's not, it's not a, you know, what you'd call a pounding beer.
It's not like one of those dark.
So you're not gonna take it to a football game?
It's like, very flavorful. Had a good aroma on it, and. Our next meeting, I'll, I'll describe the body.
You know what, you, you get some, I, I had a.
You gotta have the vocabulary.
That's right.
I had a beer at home like three weeks ago, I hadn't had one in about a year, boy, she had a heart attack, so. I'll try one of those Abbey ones.
You get a sample when you go up.
I don't know.
Yeah, it will.
I'm all set with the sample. Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Aight. Goodnight, everybody, thank you so much.
Are we doing the executive session?